All right, I will call the meeting to order. First off, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Which cannot be an application addition because of the fact that there is no public notice.
Yes, Scott, do you want to add the discussion about Seeker at the end? Okay, and also just make sure to speak into the microphones.
Yes, could we add? On the agenda, just a note that we'd like to discuss the steps in Seeker and perhaps even more generally than we pin down what happens with a subdivision application.
We'll add Max. All right, privilege of the floor, would anyone like to speak? You will have three minutes. Rhonda. You're still on mute.
I just want to make sure this is separate from the hearing, correct?
Correct, this is not the public hearing yet, this is just privilege of the floor.
Okay, then I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes unless, I don't see any other hand. Oh, Ted, did you want to say something?
Yes, thanks. Two small technical requests. Do you think the camera could be moved over a little bit so I could see the handsome face of Mr. Davis at the end? I don't, Scott, you don't have to lean forward. And would it be possible for the two panels that are labeled Town of Danby to identify themselves on the screen, just change your name? That's it.
I think that, I think that it's, well, I don't think it's anybody. I think it's Cindy and it must, it's just our computer, so.
Well, that, the computer would be the autopilot, there's a, there are two Town of Danbies.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we have, yeah.
Now, the autopilot's in addition to the Town of Danby, which is the computer.
I see. Okay. It just is, is nice to know who's behind the panels. Ooh, sorry about that, I didn't even open up my own video, sorry. Thanks.
Yep, it's everyone in this room, I think the only one you can't see is Cindy who's taking off. Okay, anyone else?
All right, on to the approval of the minute. I had a comment on the minutes and I forgot, I didn't email this in, but there was I'd stated that the Hornbrook application had been before David before, I don't think we saw.
No, I don't.
So that was just a miss, I'm sorry, I didn't. We didn't see it, David had reported it to us. So they did before David, but not before us, at least it might have on the board.
Oh yes, maybe the minutes were just, I, I did see that, but I remember it being brought up. The, I think the board, you know, there was somebody on the board just said, oh, we've seen it before, or we've, we've, we've heard of it before.
Not before, we are like aware of it because of David reported, but we never had.
Maybe just.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, that was just brought up, but it wasn't an actual formal case review.
Okay, any other? All right, we can do a roll call then, right? Five other, right? Bergman?
Yes.
Oliver? Helen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Weber? Yes. Nucci? Yes. Mahner? Yes. Okay, okay. Leslie, would you like to do our report?
Hello. Welcome Kelly, to the hot seat, right? Anyway, the board has hired two, well, hired two people recently, both bookkeepers. One is Merrill Courtwright for the West Danby Water District Clerk, and the other is Julia Hughes to sort of replace Joanna Shali, who helped out at Highway and at the Clerk's Office. So those are two people might be seen around. Let's see, and the board is working on, well, I should say Greg is working on revising regs pertaining to signage and also a special event law. So those should be coming up. My, I, I and I'm not sure what Greg would say about this, but I, I would like to just sort of put a reminder out there for not just the planning board, but all the boards, that the CAC is charged with, among other things, advising town boards on matters pertaining to development and management and protection of the town's natural resources. I know that the CAC is working on developing a list of criteria. I think they were calling it reasons to involve the CAC in proposed development. In a proposed development. You know, the criteria to pay attention to in order to evaluate situations relative to features of sites under consideration, whether it be for conservation or for development. I don't know, the thing that came up for me was maybe perhaps reviewing environmental assessments or help, helping with that sort of, those sort of tasks that all the boards, we all end up having to deal with. And things get sticky and we've had situations that were sticky and they, they could probably help us. But I hope that, I hope that we, I hope they get done with that list and that we all learn to use them. Thank you.
Bye. All right, on to our development review. Greg, do you want to just remind us maybe of the overview because the applicant is not here?
Right, so this proposal is a minor lot subdivision in the Rural One Zone District. Where each lot would be a little over 24 acres in size. And the comment from the planning board last time was just to add the 50-foot stream buffer, so that was added. And they added the signature block for the chair. So what, what the board needs to do this time, and actually, we should have done it last time, and we'll go over this too in our seeker sort of review at the end of the meeting, but is, has to go through seeker for this because it's an unlisted action. So you'll need to declare lead agency under seeker, determine environmental significance. And then, and then you'll take action on the final plat, if you so choose, and before that you would open a public hearing. So I did draft, and as part of your packet, I did put in three resolutions, very similar language, at least in the top. Whereas clauses, the one is, the first one is just declaring lead agency. And then, and then the second one is, well, it's, it's really just going through the rest of the, this, the seeker form, so we can, you know, after, after the lead agency one, we can take a look at the part two of the short environmental assessment form. To see if you agree with what I have put in for that. I don't think that I printed that out for you all, but that might have been part of the online packet, so. All right.
Does anyone have any comment on the planning of the agency or wanting to make a motion?
Could the chair speak up or pull the, the microphone closer?
Yep.
Thank you.
Did anybody declare lead agency?
Yeah, she has to do a roll call. Bergman?
Yes.
Helen? Yes. David?
Yes.
Weber? Yes. Nucci? Yes. Mahner? Yes.
Then let me put this, the seeker part two up.
Unless anyone objects, I propose to just have you read it and you say no, and we just agree.
All right, so what I've right, so I went through part two and so, and essentially it's indicated that this proposed action will have no or small impact for all of the all of the criteria. As part of that, I, I added in that the subdivision meets the dimensional requirements of the underlying zone district and is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. No new development is proposed with this application and any new development will be subject to further environmental review. So as part of that, what I did and if you want, I can I did prepare a resolution just to issue a negative determination on this proposal. That I'd be happy to screen share right now, if you want to take a look at it, or if you have it in front of you, if you wanted to, if somebody wanted to move that or talk about it, that's up to the board.
Joel, did you have something?
I wondered whether in conjunction with seeker, whether the Town of Ithaca needed to be informed, since it's on the border.
Right, yep, good question, yeah, so they did, and they wrote back today and said they, I can pull the email. Just that they didn't have any, there was no conflict or they, they had no issue with it.
Good, thanks.
Yep, so.
Do we need to include that maybe in the resolution?
We don't need to, it doesn't need to, but we do not see any issues with this proposed subdivision that would negatively impact the Town of Ithaca, we assume that any future subdivision proposals would require the same notification, in which case we would consider commenting on future proposals. That was from Chris Celestra, Senior Planner down at Town of Ithaca.
Hallie, read the resolution.
Yeah, or, or it's either you or if somebody wants to move it or make up your own, and this is just a draft.
You guys want me to read it? Yeah, well, sure, okay. So it's a format, sure. Go for it. All right, whereas an application, oh, sorry, Planning Board Resolution Number Something, we'll figure that out, of 2024, declaring lead agency minor subdivision 134, 136, and 140 uptake road parcel number four dash one dash three. Whereas an application has been submitted for review and approval by the Town of Danby Planning Board for a minor subdivision of Town of Danby Tax Parcel Number Four Dash One Dash Three by Robert J. Colletti. Apologize for any mispronunciations, applicant for Abigail Cleary and Jefferson Coleman owners. And whereas the applicant proposes to subdivide the existing 49.3 acre property into two parcels, parcel A measuring 24.6 acres, parcel B measuring 24.7 acres, and whereas the property is in rural zone, that Rural One zoning district, requiring a lot area minimum of 10 acres and lot depth of 800 feet. And whereas this is considered a minor subdivision in accordance with the Town of Danby subdivision and land division regulations, Article Two, Two One B Point One Minor Division, Minor Subdivision, option number one, a large lot land division is permitted, provided the following criteria are met. All lots resulting from the land division are eight acres or more, each with frontage on public road maintained year round. Should that be 10? Okay. Am I reading the subdivision one? Okay, sorry.
We're on run number two.
Oh, determination, okay, so declaring lead agency part three, sorry. Whereas this is an unlisted action under the Town of Danby Environmental Review of Actions and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and is subject to environmental review. And whereas this board acting as lead agency in environmental review accepts as adequate a short environmental assessment form, EAF, Part One, submitted by the applicant, and Part Two, prepared by the planning administrator. A subdivision plat entitled survey map showing lands of Abigail Cleary and Jefferson Coleman located at 134, 136, and 140 uptake road, Town of Danby, Tompkins County, New York, prepared by T.G. Miller, TC, and dated 11/01/2023, and other application materials. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Danby Planning Board, based on careful consideration of the application materials, determines the proposed subdivision will result in no significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration for purposes of Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law be filed in accordance with the provisions of Part Six Seventeen of the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
So does anybody move that?
I'll move it.
One second. Open your mic. Weber seconded?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Mahner?
Yes.
Remind me, I'll need to, I have the printed part two, and I'll need you to sign that at the end of the meeting. And also, two of the plats, whoever would like to give up one of yours, let me decide two of them, so. Okay. Well, if it's, I guess we're not there yet, I should say.
Well, I need to, because you gave me an 11 by 17.
Right.
All right. Um. Okay, so we just, lead agency environmental, so we're on the public hearing, yes?
Right.
Okay, we will open the public hearing, again, reminder, three minutes for your comments. Would anyone like to speak on this property subdivision? No? Okay. Then are there any actions on moving a motion to approve the subdivision? We don't see anything else in the meeting, right? Unless anyone has conversation or comments on anything? Okay.
And if you would like, I, I handed you you know, a sheet, you know, as you saw, there were comments that did come in from Rhonda earlier today, and I did, I did, I did have some responses, and I provided those to you all today, if you would like, I can read those into the record. Or just submit them in writing, yeah.
Anyone want to make a motion? Clearly. Okay, yeah. Bergman?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Mahner?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was for the plat approval. Yeah?
Yeah, oh, I forgot to close the public hearing, I think. Okay.
Yeah, and it's just the chair who does that. All right, so I'll have you sign the two of those plats, you'll sign in another part two, you'll sign for release.
So do we need to, oh wait, there's the one and the three, do we need to do both of these?
No, they weren't short, so.
Oh, this is the declaring lead agency, okay, and we're approving that, so we're good.
Okay.
Or whatever you, you tell me, what I need to sign.
So ju, so just to be clear, that, that, that motion just before, where you're approving the plat, was that for the resolution that I drafted? Or is that just your own resolution that you just came up with, which is fine?
So, yeah, should I make, well, I guess you could have, you should have, right? When you made the motion.
It's, it's either or, I mean, you, you, I'd usually just, just to read it in, of, you know, hear what we're, hear what we're doing, but but it's also, it'll just be part of the record, so, I think, because everyone, all the planning board members have it in front of them, so you know that that's what you're, you're looking at.
Yes.
It's available to the public, so that's what you were stood reviewing and made a motion on.
Sorry.
I'm guessing that before there were not long resolutions?
No.
Okay.
There was a sheet.
Yeah.
She probably hasn't, that we would sometimes make things, make points if we wanted to make points and then do a little.
And I'll probably still continue to use those, those are handy to have. But, yeah, for, for some projects that might require more seeker involvement, I might just actually draft up a resolution, just to make it very abundantly clear of what sort of the process is, but, but yeah, everyone does it a little different. I actually took these from CJ, who is the planner, couple planners before David, so she had some good templates there.
All right. Shall we have some seeker discussion and then we'll get your first report?
Scott, you had a question, are you, what do you want to?
Put your mic on.
Your mic, your mic.
Okay, let's let's just start very generally, I'm an outsider thinker, and over the years, you know, I pay attention and I focus, but I, I probably don't have as good of a total picture of the whole process as I should, so so somebody comes, somebody wants to subdivide their is there, is there a distinction between I know they're gonna, that a plat will come in here at some point, is there a distinction between just self-dividing with no building versus subdividing with plans for a structure?
There, there are two separate processes, so, so subdivision of land is just purely that. And then, so if somebody said, hey, I want to subdivide the land to build something, to build this use.
Okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
It's, those are just two separate processes.
Yeah. Okay, so if they come in with a plan that's self-divided and built, and that, we look at that as first, we deal with the subdivision that we deal with, whatever they're.
Not necessarily, I mean, maybe, but depending on what the zoning would allow, you'd first start with, what does the zoning allow, and maybe it could allow you know, if, whatever that person was trying to build, maybe it was allowed without a subdivision, so then it becomes their choice. Do you want to subdivide, or do you want to just start the, the development process? It's all just based on what's allowed in the zoning, if, if that, whatever they were going to build, whatever the, this development would be, if it is only a i, if it's not allowed to be on a lot with another use or another structure or something, then they would have to subdivide it, so it kind of I'm going to keep it kind of general, because it really depends on the zoning and what's there.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, there could be situations where so, subdividing would be allowable, but, under the zoning, but adding a structure would not, perhaps.
Yeah, sure.
An example of a situation where subdivision.
Just make sure to talk into the mic. I mean, I can hear you just well, but.
Can you give us an example of a situation where subdivision would be allowed, but building a structure would not?
There's, we could just go over there where the road, there's, you can't build because they're not making a road anymore. There is a road, there's houses beyond a parcel, but a woman with a parcel there can't build on it because the town is ongoing to maintain it up.
Or if there's, or if there's existing structures on the properties that you're subdividing, and it already maxed out the zone, then you wouldn't be able to put more structures on it, because it already has existing structures that meet, that max out for the zoning of that zone.
Okay. All right.
So can you just really break it, well, this is maybe, but when, when do we have seeker, when do we not have seeker, just like the most basic?
Yeah, so there's, well, the, the first step, you know, let's just take a look at this handout that I just printed off right before our meeting.
Like, probably get to a yes or no.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I was gonna, actually.
No, 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 this is, this is good, I mean, these are this is gonna come up every time. One second. I think I printed up all copies of it for me, so I need to find it. Not that one, actually, it's you should probably look at it. All right, I'll actually, I'll, I'll use the flowchart, so you first, so whenever we receive, and by we had to see the town, whenever there's a proposal, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the zoning officer, so me to just say, is this, what, what kind of action is this? Does this fall under a type one list? And I can go over these lists, too.
That is.
Right, so it, right.
That's why, okay.
Right. Well, I provide, yeah, now, now the thing is, I, I make the yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm charged with making that, with that determination, it's usually formality for the for then, for then the, the lead agency to incorporate whatever that determination is into their, into their findings that they're declaring themselves lead agency, but, no, that is, yeah, that is up to the zoning officer. Or the co-enforcement officer, if there's no planner zoning officer.
So.
Yeah, you pretty much, yeah, so, so first, first, you, you start with what is the action, where does it fall, does it fall under type one? Does it fall under type two, or is it not listed? If it's type, just wait, let, let me just finish this thought. If it's, if it's type two, no further action is required. You don't even need to say it, but it's usually just good protocol to say, this is a type two and no further environmental review is required.
Okay.
So a lot of the BZA decisions have to do with setback variances, and those are type two, so often in my communications with BZA, in fact, we have a meeting next week, that's for setback for solar project, so you'll see that there's, there's no further environmental review required.
So Greg, with respect your first part. your first box, well, to the left of them, might it read, what, what type of action is this, or what, what type, which classification of action has the plan determined that this is?
The, the first.
Question, it's not a yes or no.
The, the first, the first one.
Your first box, you have to, so it's saying, is the action subject to?
If it's yes, then it's.
Well, okay, yes, yes, would go, yes, would go to the two boxes.
Or, or three, there are three boxes. So the first thing is to just say.
But if it's here, it's not subject, it's not going to be subject to seeker.
Well, yeah, then we get to know further.
Right.
I'm very rigid about these things, but that's okay.
So the, the, the first.
Really, so that one, well, then you'd be not.
I don't know what, I, I'm not.
You, you asked it as a question, a yes, no question.
It, yes.
Okay, so, so your original thing is yes, no question.
Yeah.
So whenever that happens, there's a line that says, if yes, we go this way, if no, we go some other way.
Right.
So if yes, you're going to the right, but no, it goes to, no, no further.
Right, but, but the, there's also these unlisted actions.
Right.
And that's also a yes.
Okay, so.
So there are, there are, there are three buckets, there's, yeah, no.
How many do I have?
It's good to go over it a lot, because if you don't do it all the time, it, it does get, it, it can get kind of confusing. So the state has two lists, type one, type two, and I was gonna actually copy and paste all those and print them out, too, and I'd be happy to send those to the board, they're, they're, they're fairly straightforward. If they don't fall on either of those lists, they are unlisted. Type one and unlisted have to go through an environmental determination, like what the board just did. If they're type two, no further review, and you'll never see anything, you know, I'll, I'll just note that, or, or, or handle that. Um, so all the building permits that Steve and I issue for homes, um, tho- those are type two. Fences, I mean, basic maintenance, um, all the road work that the highway guys do, that's all type two action, and those just don't require any further environmental review. Those were done under, the, the state did a general environmental impact statement, I can't cite, I don't know what, what year, but, and reviewed all of these types of smaller actions, and just considered them all type two. So if they don't fall on the type two list, then they're either a type one or an unlisted, and they're going to require some sort of review and determination by a public agency, and that's where staff and administrators at a town cannot make a determination of environmental significance. Now, this flowchart looks awfully daunting, but the, I would say ninety some percent, I don't know what, ninety-eight percent, ninety-seven percent of actions that you'll review are probably not going to relate to, uh, you're probably going to come to a negative declaration, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, I'm gonna pan the, if, 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 has anybody here ever gone through a, where, where a determination was found to be a positive declaration? Right, it, they're, they're pretty rare, because then they would trigger developing an impact, an environmental impact statement, a first draft impact statement, there's public hearings involved with that, um, so.
I remember one of the trainings, like, if the amount of development would be so significant, we wouldn't, you know, let it sit here, like, they have to turn this, like, nine hundred and twenty, there's a painting where it's like, it just, it just seemed like, for me, our area, it would be like, the type of application, but, I'm sure there's less of this.
Yeah, excuse me, once, once again, um, there are enough microphones, Scott, if you grab that one right in front of you, you can shift the other one over, and then everyone will be able to be heard.
Yes.
He just, he adds a sink in front of my open screen.
No.
So probably, I, you know, that, that determination, though, does fall on the lead agency then to make that determination.
Okay.
But it, it, it's, as I said, there's, you know, ninety some percent of projects you review probably will result in, you know, a negative declaration, um, but there's, there's certainly a possibility for, you know, for, uh, for developments, um, where the board just feels that it's, you know, it triggers a review, and, and maybe the, the impacts are moderate to significant.
Was that, what happened with Norbert?
No, I think they were negative, they just had to do a full because of the scope of the project, right? Because they had to do a full, yeah.
Any other questions on this, they're good, it all looks like Joel has a question, if you're willing to take us.
Sure.
I just got a comment on, you know, as, as you might imagine, developers want to avoid a positive declaration. So in, in the case of Norbert, um, there was considerable back and forth um, in order for them to avoid a positive declaration, so there's an opportunity to sort of mitigate impacts before the application actually gets to that point. And that's what happened in that instance, and that's common, because it's such a big deal if it's a positive declaration. Was there a positive declaration in the case of the, um, David Hall and Gundermann Road? Joel, do you remember?
I do not remember.
I don't think so. I don't think there was.
It, it, it was on, you were fine. Honest tour.
Yeah, Ted, were you talking about, um, when he wanted to change and, and do the food stuff and a bunch of other stuff with that property, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that was the general case, he, it came up twice, once in the context of changing the zoning, and then again in terms of a special permit, when the first one failed.
That was a while ago.
It was a while.
I don't think it's a positive declaration in either case, though.
So I provided that handout, so there, there's the flowchart handout there, and then, and then the other staples, it's just the cut and paste from the state, um, but it's, it is very helpful to, to just go through. I mean, I'm, I'm finding myself every couple of weeks just double checking, making sure that, that we're kind of going through the motions. Um, and it, and as you'll notice, I, I think the state has, I'm just curious, they have twelve steps, and I only cut and pasted step one through four, because, again, ninety some percent of the cases are just going to be steps one through four. So ca- steps five through twelve is, is the majority of this flowchart.
Or down.
What's that?
Is that if, if you go up the positive, or?
Right.
What is the MD?
That's a conditioned negative declaration, and that's also in your little packet.
Yeah, thanks, Greg.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you know, we're, we're here, if you want to keep talking about.
Well, no, I think, for me, I, I want to go home and, you know, read all this, so, and then, uh, see if I have, you know, any more questions.
Well, and I think, um, it's not to be getting that some of the training sessions that were able, that were also, they're spoken, so those are available to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, that, on this?
We can revisit, a later date, see if we need to revisit.
But I think there's no, so, just to recap of your initial question, is that I'm, I'm the one sort of making the call on, on what they are initially, and then sending that to the board. I mean, clearly, if the board disagrees, and that's, we can just sort of, you know, talk about that in a meeting, I mean, an open meeting, but, um, but that's usually just, just my call, uh, to make, and it's just looking at the, the state lists. So, and then we go from there, and then it's, whatever, step, step two is, uh, using the right assessment form, and that's when they submit the assessment form, um, that you all look at, either the short assessment form or the long assessment, or assessment form. But the long one is required for all type one actions, um, or just at the discretion of the zoning officer. So I, like, for the Hornburg proposal, I just asked them to submit a long form, because I knew we needed a little bit more information for that one. So.
So now he's not going, would make a huge copy of this.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this is great, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, you might be.
Sure, so, in terms of report, um, Leslie talked a little bit about it, just, so we were looking at some, doing some zoning amendments, um, but for right now, uh, we've just proposed just some minor sign allowance amendments for the Hamlet Center and Hamlet Neighborhood Zone districts. Um, as you know, there's, well, there's, the Dandy Market is going to be opening up here in a couple of weeks, and then potentially that coffee shop here a little bit later this year. So, um, you know, I just kind of thought it's appropriate to allow some extra signage for those businesses. Um, what else? That Hornburg proposal, I know some people have asked about that, I sent that comment letter to the board, I think you, you saw that comment letter that I sent back to the applicant, so there was quite a, quite a, and that's in the, um, on, online, too, that's in the, the case file, too. Um, they have a lot to do, and they've actually, they are hiring a, um, right now, they're hiring a wetland delineator, and that, that company is also going to do a habitat assessment, um, so to take a look at, uh, reptilian and amphibian, um, species that are, that are on site. So, and then I think that some of their biggest work is going to be looking at the septic, um, that, that was brought up. Yeah, but, but they've got a lot, they've, they've got a lot to do, so we might not see them for another couple of months, um. Oh, what else? So we're, we're, we're getting very close, there's this multifamily housing grant, um, that the town has awarded, and so we're just going through the, the, the backend process of getting all the paperwork ready, but, um, I would imagine in the next couple of weeks, that applications should be available to property owners for that. So I know that Olivia Venn owns a couple of these properties out here, and she's been asking about that. And, uh, we heard last night at a town board meeting, um, somebody is looking to, um, help develop small skateboarding parks in municipalities in the area, and sort of partnering with, with youth, and um, getting them involved in building a little skate park and, and landscaping it. So he's put together some quotes for me, there's some grants available at Tompkins County that, um, if the town board is supportive of this, and we find a location for it, um, on town-owned land, then, and I'd be applying for just a very small grant, just to help them get that built and set up. Yeah, you're gonna be the first one writing? Um, let's see, typically, I type up something, but, of, of what I also been working on, but lots of other, lots of other, um, area meetings, um, I don't, I don't, lots of other committees that, through, uh, regional committees, Tompkins County committees, um, so, um, there's a drinking water for protection plan, City of Vithica, and part of City of Vithica's, um, drinking water, actually, the watershed is in Dandy, so in fact, so they're looking at helping the town maybe even beef up some of the regulations around solar development, if they're in this watershed, um, just to make sure that stormwater is mitigated appropriately. And on that, actually, it's a good segue, so the Norbert Solar Development folks are, to provide this update to you all, that they have cleared the site, they're ready for construction, probably at the end of April, um. I went out there a few weeks ago, and there was some concerning aspects about some of the site clearing they were doing, they've had a lot of change of staff, and so I think it was a left-handed note, the right-hand was doing, um, so then I went out there with, uh, somebody from the DEC, and they did a walkthrough, he's a professional engineer, and he'll be, um, issuing an inspection report, which will likely in, include a notice of violation and possible fines, um, just because of just some of the disturbance that they were doing, and they weren't appropriately addressing it, um, with, with erosion control techniques that were, that were approved on the plans. So when that report is out, I'll report that to the town boards, everybody's apprised, but, um, but they, I went out there yesterday onsite and did a, did a uh, walk, walk through, they, they have, they have cleaned everything up, from what I can tell, and they're, they've done a lot, extra work. So, as I said, the construction should start at the end of April, on that, so there might be lots of trucks going by, and, and, and extra people in the area, um, as they get that set up through the summer. I think that's probably about it for right now.
Would it ever be appropriate to, to invite someone from the school district to give us some idea about what's going on with that building and?
Yeah, I think so, and, um.
If there were to do something like a skate park, there's.
Yeah, that was brought up last night, too, um, a lot of it has to do with the insurance. So they ideally, you know, there's a lot more nonprofit land in the area, so, you know, such as the park across the street here, it's a nonprofit land, but they've been quoted to ensure, uh, a skate park, it can be seven, eight, nine thousand dollars, whereas if you insure on a town property, it could just be, it could even be, maybe no more than a thousand dollars. So that's why this organization is just trying to find town property to do that. As far as the school, there have been, there have been concerns from mostly residents on Gundermann Road who have, um, written in and, and called in about what's going on there. And I could find an email, or I'd be happy to send it to the board, but, um, one of the residents on Gundermann Road talked to someone at, at the school district, and it sounded like they were kind of giving them a little bit of, yeah, we, we'll, we'll deal with things, we'll deal with things, but there wasn't a lot of assurance that they're going to clean things up, I guess that there's a lot of, um, storage containers out there, right?
It's getting to be more, and get that junk.
Right.
Along the side of the, left-hand side of the building that you face, and, um, you know, the, the things you lose to get rid of stuff, I mean, I think they are cleaning some of that.
I don't know, it's, uh, it's a tale of it's under our purview, but I guess if there's enough comments, and the town wanted to make a stand, so they could write a letter to the school board.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
For their meetings, I mean, they have their school board meetings, too.
Yeah, I, I think it could just take, I said this to some resident, that it just might be a little bit of a pressure campaign, um, you know, if there's enough concern. So if you'd like, I mean, I can just read you what this resident wrote, if you're just curious. So Dan Bryman, somebody at ICSC, called, called, we had a very good chat. Um, he's definitely trying to sound cooperative to a neighboring property owner, though I'm not sure how seriously he meant the things he said. On the topic of the storage containers, he said the newer ones were being used to store furniture made redundant by the pandemic, and they were planning to get rid of what's in them, so they should be gone by the end of the summer or year. This was in the context of my concerns about runoff from the containers getting into my field, um, she owns the property behind the school, um, where I plan to have organic food production. On the topic of general condition of the building and grounds, he said that Vithica City School was still using portions of the buildings as office space, which is curious, because I've almost never seen any cars in parks and lots. Um, he did not, he did not see much interest in the idea of painting or otherwise improving the exterior appearance of the building, but when I mentioned the playground equipment and pointed out that it had the potential to be classified as an attractive nuisance and be unsafe for kids, he made noises about possibly having things removed or torn down. When I asked about other building uses, oh, so this resident was also going to ask this person about, you know, could this school ever be sold to maybe a developer like Vithica Neighborhood Housing Services? Because that company retrofitted Keugia Elementary School up in the north part of the lake, um, for, um, for, I think, forty thousand senior housing, yeah. Because that company retrofitted Keuga Elementary School up in the north part of the lake, um, for, um, for forty senior housing. Yeah. So he said he was open, but we'd have to sell the building first and we're still using it. Um. So my interpretation of the conversation is that Ithaca City Schools doesn't want trouble with the neighbors and therefore would be open to turning the place over for other uses. If it were made worth their while, particularly if Dandy Government were, were to encourage the transition. And then she did ask if we could have a housing conversion meeting. So I haven't yet followed up.
What I thought about is, is senior housing and also daycare. In that building.
And those would be allowed uses in that district.
Oh, sorely need.
Yeah. It's, I'm guessing Ithaca City School, it's a big organization. They've got lots of property. There's just, there, this is just kind of surplus property that they have some current tenants in it, the reading library and a couple of other offices.
That's up in the mall.
Okay. So there, I'm guessing this is just very far down on their, you know, they don't want to deal with it. And so if, if there is some, you know, I'm guessing that it's, it might be worthwhile just to talk with this person that this resident talked to, but, um, you know, as I said, a little bit of a pressure campaign, maybe something, it'd be them being invited in, you know, to, um, come have a meeting with the town board. And then talking about it, maybe finding, you know, putting something out there for, you know, for, for developers to see about, you know, an opportunity. As I said, the, the zoning, it's in the Hamlet Neighborhood Zone District. So, you know, there's many types of uses that would be allowed there, but residential would certainly be a, um, you know, one that would be very appropriate for that area.
So it would be maybe, I feel like asking someone to talk with us would be a place to start and then if we're not, if we're sort of not very much response, getting.
Microphone, please.
I said, I would think that it would be good to start with having someone coming and talking to us about our concerns and, and wishes that place better, look better, that whatever we think needs to change. But then also, um, if we get no response from the school district, to have a letter writing campaign or something where we put some pressure on. Because that's only getting to look worse day by day. And there's good uses for it.
I think Joel has a hand up.
Yeah, I would have been ignoring Joel for a while. So what is, did you have something else to add?
Well, I wondered whether Greg might want to mention the Safe Streets for All, where we are with that process.
Oh, thanks, Joel. Yeah, right. I, I did not write a list of, apologize. Um, so the Safe Streets for All, um, project is a, well, this, this isn't about the school. This is separate. Okay. It's a Tompkins County wide initiative, um, involving most of the municipalities, not all, but just right now it's about, um, improving street safety. So we're actually, Joel and I are having a meeting tomorrow with.
Yes.
The consultant for the project to talk about hotspots in Dandy for, for road safety. So certainly if anybody has suggestions, we would happily bring them up in our meeting tomorrow.
Gundermann Road.
Gundermann Road.
There's lots of young kids on the road and there's really not enough, I mean, I, they're in the book, particularly around the school building area. And there's not enough of a shoulder. There's big ditches on the one side, um, to make it safe for the kids. And people come flying down that hill. And I've seen a lot more law enforcement on, on the main road. But there's no place for them to sit and not concede really, unless they did sat in a school area somewhere over my driveway, which I'd be happy to happen to.
Please welcome your time.
That too, where again, there's a number of kids in that neighborhood now. There's no sidewalk, what kind of, it's usually not needed, but people going home live, that resident coming into town like, they're not in thirty five.
Also on Gundermann Road, and this could be just me, but when you pull up to the stop sign on Comfort, you know, you kind of have the feeling, I don't, it could be just me that it's a four-way stop. And I always have to remind myself, it's not. And I keep thinking, this is, this is a spot where an accident could happen. Somebody's gonna pull up to that stop sign. And they're gonna do the standard country thing. They pull up, you know, there's a car not too far away, but they're gonna be slowing down. Maybe somebody going down. And as you say, not only would they be mistaken and everywhere, but the vehicle might be going faster than you want. So. Yeah, this, I don't know. You might want to at least think that through.
Yeah.
I'm, you're one of those problems, but you're also very different, but there's a lot of kids on the road now, you see the younger ones. Compared to when we first moved out there and there was one kid, same as our kids.
I take notes. So thanks. Certainly if there's any other places that you, oh.
Yeah, I, there's a couple of hands up. I don't know if we want to, yeah. Let, I guess, let me know what you want to, what topic it's on and we'll see if it should stay here or go somewhere else.
Yeah, this is a different topic, but it's more by way of announcement than anything. But, um, but I, but I want you all to know that after something like fifteen years of negotiation, uh, we finally reached agreement with NISAG to acquire the, uh, right of way, uh, for the, um, South Hill Trail extension, all the way to the county line. Um, which includes, you know, a good section in, in Dandy. So that's happening. It's gonna, uh, the, uh, each town has to, as, will have a, will have its own, uh, easement. And, um, and that approval of that is going to all the town boards. It's partly in Dryden, partly in Ithaca, partly in Caroline and partly in Dandy. Um, all those will be going to their respective town boards in the month of April for approval. Um, and then we'll finally have a framework for, uh, you know, for upgrading. The, uh, Burns to Banks section is in pretty good shape. Um, and that's our focus for the first phase. Um, the next section from, from, uh, from Banks to, uh, um, Midar has a couple of, uh, really bad washouts in the Dandy section that will be a significant, um, you know, a, a big project. So it's, so, so, you know, that, that first stretch would be of, of huge benefit to, to Caroline. Um, I expect, you know, within a year probably we'll have that up and running. So it's, uh, been a long time coming. I've been on a committee for two years and, and, and my predecessor for years before that. So, um, we're really pleased to have that coming to fruition.
Um, Ted, I think you were before Leslie and then Leslie and then we'll try to wrap.
Right. Mine is brief. I just wanted to add some emphasis to Scott's most recent comment about the corner of Comfort and Gundermann. If you're on Comfort headed north, that stop sign is very dangerous. Uh, there's a sudden increase in the slope of the road. So if you start braking based on what you see, you will go right through, you know, what you see before that, you'll go right through the intersection. Uh, it's happened to me. And also approaching in that same direction, there's limited visibility of, in both directions of what's happening on Gundermann. So if anybody's going to complain, you know, to the Department of Transportation or whoever owns that piece of road, please do. It's dangerous. Thank you, Scott.
I just wanted to mention the intersections on Nelson Road with Miller and Troy are.
That she's mentioning the intersection on Nelson with Miller and Troy, or Miller with Milton and Troy. Yeah.
Nelson, Miller and Troy. Yeah.
Got him.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Oh.
I have my last little thing. As long as you stick with it. Greg, have you?
I think.
I think my mic's on there. Uh, you haven't yet, uh, approached the board about the signage, um, re- adjustments in the zoning or you have?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I have, but they're not.
Well, I, I, what I was wondering was, what about that curious, um, zoning requirement of a coffee shop has to be on a corner? Wouldn't it, why not just, unless somebody somewhere can say why, or some rationale, you might want to throw that one in too.
I, I did and it, it just, there was some, there wasn't, there wasn't a full-throated endorsement of it. So we're, we're not, you know, I'm, I'm not being, I'm not looking at amending that at this time, but, I mean, but you're, you're on the planning board and if the planning board feels that should be amended, they can always make a motion to, you know, recommend it to the town board. But it's, for right now, for right now, the, you know, kind of what, what happened was, you know, new planner here, I'm opening the zoning ordinance. I noticed lots of little things. A lot of them were just sort of errors, like wrong references and, and some language adjustments. So I started doing some cleanup of editorial things. And then I started noticing things that I thought would help processes better. But it, like with this, it's, there's really no limit. It just sort of can blow up and, and it sort of expands and, uh, and, and the thought was just, let's just kind of pull that back for now and, um, you know, really that there are two potential business owners here in the Hamlet. And, and, you know, just to allow them to have some, some, some small advertising signs would just be, you know, a good, you know, first step in that. So, no, everything else was just kind of tabled at this point.
Yeah.
But certainly if.
They could always get a, hypothetically, someone could get a variance if that ever got in the way. It just.
Right. I just, you know, variances, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't like to, to have people go through variance processes too, too much.
I'm, I'm just saying, if nothing is done to change the zoning, that's an avenue.
Well, I know, and I know that the, the potential coffee shop owner down here at nineteen fourteen Dandy Road. So yeah, he, right now he will have to build a road into the site just to be considered a corner. And I, I mean, he's, he's in, talks with DOT, has been for a while about that cost. And I mean, it's, it's a, it's almost a, it's almost a deal breaker for him. And so they're kind of reconsidering.
More than the trailer itself.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all.
Scott, I mean, it's tough to, to have, we're, we're trying to purchase development in the Hamlet and there's a lot of restrictions and, and there's not, you know, even the way it is, the parcels are privately owned. And so it's already up to the individual to want to develop it. And if it's harder to do so. And also if there's not businesses in the Hamlets, it'll be harder for me to, like, the businesses kind of need each other to support each other. So it's, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm all for less restrictions in the Hamlet. If we have, we have really a lot of restrictions on most of Dandy, not this area.
Hello. Yes.
How do you feel?
I'm you. Thank you.
So in terms of, do we, um, I mean, there's all good times in these papers that come out. It would be interesting to see if we could get somebody to, we know that we have one open and I think there was a little thing in the paper, but now when the coffee shop opens to see if we could get that stuff, somebody to come and visit it and talk about it so that people know. Because one of the things particularly for the stuff in the Hamlet is, I don't know. I go down to the end of Gundermann Road one day to see kids early, like eight fifteen. And I have to sit at the end of Gundermann Road because there's just piles of cars coming from Candor and Oego into downtown Ithaca. So to get those businesses up and productive, it would be nice for people that work downtown to somehow know that, that it exists. So.
I think that's also possible when you want to port it though too, because that way you don't have to turn in and out of, to the main street. You can go down the side street and then into it. It's not that as either a second inch or something, man. I'm saying I love the laws. This is the kind of problem.
Maybe that was the rationale. Yeah.
Yes, it was.
But the other one, except that folks isn't here, they, they have a driveway that is.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, oh, no, that's, sorry. The, the difference with that one, with, you mean with the Dandy Market, the Hamlet, they're in the Hamlet Center. The Hamlet Center doesn't require these uses on corner lots. It's only in the Hamlet Neighborhood. And if you think about it, if you think about like a ticket, take Gundermann Road, let's say for instance, you drive up Gundermann Road and it's a quiet residential road. So probably the thought for putting that in there is that, uh, just think about a neighbor on Gundermann Road, if they started, they opened up a restaurant. You might, you might not like that as a, I'm just being a devil out of here.
And that was a lot of the question at one point about, um, what was David's property when he wanted to change it to producing food and all kinds of stuff? That was some of the discussion we had about not wanting to have, you know, trucks delivering stuff coming up and down.
We just finally got our trash. I'll take up at four thirty in the morning. Bottle on service trucks do a new business.
So just going back to the, the potential coffee shop, I'm, um, I'm, yeah, I don't know if he'll, he'll, he'll come back forward with it because he has to, it'll be a, a major cost for him to work with DOT and get that, get that in.
Well, that's too bad. So he won't do anything since not going to do the, the coffee truck.
He hasn't.
So you have to do that for anything. Oh.
Yeah.
Isn't that money sixty though?
Yeah. I always think it is, or it's like from.
No, his, his, it's just passenger again hollow.
Okay. But there's one house before, right?
Right.
That's still like, you can't believe you feel like stretching neighborhood just a little bit because it is like a main.
Yeah.
Road fair now. I mean, it's not really a neighborhood, but at least if you said first thing in the morning, you know, those people coming south into the city, it doesn't feel like, I'm in a quiet neighborhood. It feels like I'm in a traffic area.
Right. But that was, right. I mean, that, that was just the, the town board when they were going through the, the zoning rewrite, they looked at what is the Hamlet. So that was just defined as part of the Hamlet.
And not a part of the Hamlet Center.
Right. Yeah. So the Hamlet Center is just, you know, it's just a few properties kind of right in this area. And then down at West Dandy, right on the corner of Station Road and, and ninety-six and thirty-four, kind of that area. So.
So that the other possibility we change the zoning, like stretching out the center?
That's a possibility. So these are all, these are all discretionary decisions by the town board. Um, certainly these laws aren't static, you know, they, they can be, they, they can always be amended like we're doing now with, with the sign allowance. Um, but, but when I brought that proposal up a couple of meetings ago, there wasn't, there wasn't a resounding yes, let's do that. There was a, maybe, so we just, it just felt like that wasn't.
It just seems like a stellar general could almost go there. A little coffee trucker should be able to, you know, it feels out of scale. Yeah.
I'm just applying the laws written.
I know.
Whether I agree, yeah.
So can the planning board suggest to the, and the planning board suggests to the town board that maybe we discuss it a little more?
You can suggest whatever you want to the planning board. Yeah. Whether as a resident or, or as a, a planning board, making motions. Absolutely.
You have it on the list of the planning board? No, just to bring it up again. Okay. Great.
Yeah.
And we get.
Motion is closed?
Yeah, I adjourned the meeting. No motion needed.
Right.
I love it on Zoom.